Okay, welcome to the Vermillion Schools School District Order of Education Regular Meeting. Today is November 13th, 2021. Justin, please call the board.
Mrs. Steph?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson, here. Mrs. Russell?
Here.
Mr. April, here. Mrs. Ennis?
Here.
All members present.
Okay, please join us in the pledge of allegiance on our own island. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have Crystal Russell, who can you legislate for me?
Um, I actually have a meeting tonight. I think they were recessed, so I can do a little chaos. I'll keep an eye on it.
Okay. Wonderful, thank you. Okay, as the presiding officer, I am going to read a little bit from our policy about public participation for the board meeting. The presiding officer shall be guided by the following rules. A, public participation shall be permitted only as indicated on the order of business in the bylaws of this parliament. B, anyone having a legitimate interest in the actions of the board may participate during the public portion of the meeting. C, participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and will be requested to preface the comments by an announcement of their name, address, and a group affiliation if and when approached. D, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to two minutes duration unless extended by the presiding officer. E, no participant may speak more than once on a certain topic unless all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question or divulge individuality. The presiding officer may, 1, pivot to public comments that are frivolous, repetitive, and/or harassing; 2, interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, abrasive, off-topic, obscene, or irrelevant; 3, request any individual to view the meeting when that person does not observe reasonable decorum or is disruptive to the conduct of the meeting; 4, request the assistance of law officers in the removal of a disorderly person when the person's conduct interferes with the orderly process of the meeting; 5, call for a recess or adjournment to another time when a lack of public decorum so interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting as to ward such action; 6, waive these rules with the approval of the board when necessary for the protection or privacy of the administration and the board of business. Okay, we have Phil, who just sent in the information.
Okay, we had a discussion with the board, made some comments, and did a presentation from the community. Had a special board meeting last Wednesday, and, uh, no, it was actually not last Wednesday, it was October 1st, was the special board meeting that we held. And so I had a resolution that was looking for the board at that time, and the resolution was tabled. So the reservation is back on tonight, and so I'm going to read the resolutions. Recommend a resolution for the board to approve a mask mandate for Vermillion Schools beginning Wednesday, September 15th, 2021, and to be evaluated again on Monday, October 13th, 2021.
I'll move.
Second.
Justin Colville, please.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
No discussion. Mrs. Steph?
No.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. April?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Motion to be adjourned, please. Indeed.
The next portion of our meeting is the public participation.
Eric Jones. Eric Jones. Last time I was here, I asked you guys, under what authority do you have to implement a mask mandate or any help? I didn't get an answer to that, but I already know that answer, and you don't have the authority. Now, I know that you guys have already shot down the resolution, but we're fighting more than just mandates here. We're fighting vaccines as well, other kinds of implements that you might have planned further down the road. Bill, how the law is clear, Article 1, Section 2 of the Ohio Bill of Rights. It's aptly named preservation of the freedoms of choose, health care, and health care coverage. Article A states that federal, state, or local law or rule shall compel directly or indirectly any person, employer, or health care provider to participate in a health care system. Now, just in case you're wondering what a health care system is, it's actually a binder here. A health care system is, um, a health care system means a public or private entity whose function or purpose includes the management of processes of in- or part health care services, health care data, health care information for all of its participants. So any kind of contact tracing is clear, it's not allowed, according to this law. Any kind of vaccines, it's a health care service, you can't do that. You guys do not have the ability to do any of that. So if you guys are thinking about doing another mask mandate or bringing this up, and this is before the Ohio Supreme Court. I know this is a passionate issue, and I thank you guys for hearing out everybody in the community. Thank you.
Joe Jones.
I know that we've, my name is Joseph Jones, I'm the legislature's statistics bureau. I know that we made a big deal, we've been vulnerable, about how we felt about this issue with COVID-19 protocols on our kids. And we want you guys to know that that's not ignorance, that's not, it's righteous indignation. And it's not meant to be personal, our kids are in the line of fire, and we don't want to do this every month or every two weeks. And our kids have suffered, and we are fighting for them, and that's why we're so passionate. And that's why we were so disappointed, and we felt that you guys were not very forward with us when you had applied for SIR pre-funds, which part of those funds of accepting them is that you accept those protocols. Nobody here wants you guys to take a hit for that, but you gotta be honest with us and let us know what's on the table when we ask you. And you're not, and that's why you got off the flat. I don't like being disrespectful, I don't like being upset, but if I come to you in good faith and ask you what's on the table, and you're not forthcoming with me, well then, yeah, I'm gonna be upset because my kid is in the line of fire, and my kid is the one that suffers. And I was really shocked when Scott April said, you know, um, I hope they did commit a crime because that means they will get more money. There's not a worse feeling as a kid when a teacher says, I don't care what they give your kids for the money. That, that's why we're upset, and that's why we're in a vision. And I'm telling you guys, I'm not trying to be threatening or anything, but we will protect our kids. We will fight for them, we will litigate for them, and we will not stop. So we will be polite, we follow the rules, but we will be tenacious, and we will not give up. Thank you.
Allyne Lee.
Good evening, board members, I ask you to count to ten, and I want you to pay attention, I have six points. I want you to write down the first letter of the first word that I say at the end, or if you're, well, the same letter. Okay, you may go. Okay, good evening, I'm here tonight to express my views and concerns on mandatory, perhaps, a mask in the schools. Number one, C, DC, offers guidelines and recommendations on just about everything. There are recommendations on diet, exercise, vaccines, sleep, social and mental health, and for everybody to wear a bicycle helmet. To our school board, that's not your job to mandate that on us, that is our job as parents. And especially now with the illness going around, we need to step up our game, keep your kids healthy, active. And when they don't feel well, do the right thing, they stay home. Two, how? How are we comparing to live with this virus? Choosing the simple, easiest answer and asking everyone, not the right answer. We all know COVID is here. Three, optional. Our children, our choices, their choices, those that are age to make those responsible choices. They know the pros and cons. Four, inconsistencies, quarantine guidelines. For a positive student, they can return to school 10 days after their first symptoms, or on the same website that says a student is positive can return to school 10 days after their first test results. Sometimes you get a test result, takes three days, and then the lab results coming back. I have someone out who's out of 10 days, and they still don't have test results. These are times where keeping our children out of school, that should not be because of their inconsistencies. Five, COVID. Would you see? Again, one way or another, the bit this virus is here to stay. Six, enough. Eighteen months, Ohio shut down, and COVID is still here. Thankfully, we have been given some tools to learn how to live with this new virus. When you choose to vaccinate, don't vaccinate a mask, vaccinate a mask. Do not even know the risks. Get healthy and active, updated cleaning standards. These are everything we put into place, give us the opportunity to use them, and let our children return to a normal school year. Choose what's best for your family, and know that this is a school board, this is not a health board. If something arises and you have your questions, it should be going to the health board. Erie County, Ohio Department of Health, their job is for educating us, and they're doing a good job of it, along with all the teachers and everything they put up for the past eighteen months. Do we know about the board? Do we have choice? Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank everybody here for the time you have given. Everybody here in the previous meetings and in this meeting. I think it's important to recognize that you've allowed an open forum for people who have different opinions on a difficult subject. And I think I can speak on everybody's behalf that we certainly appreciate that, too. That's important. Number two is that I think oftentimes when you have a, uh, an organization like a school board, you have people that are volunteering their time and their work, and they're extra hours outside of their work to do their best for the community that they're serving. And I think we need to thank you for all of that. I think also what happens sometimes is you lose a certain confidence in your constituents when leadership of the board, and that goes to the superintendent of schools, is not, uh, does not come across as transparent or honest or truthful. And I think that's an issue that many government agencies have with their constituents. In this particular case, we had a meeting, a special, uh, we had a meeting, no, we had a special meeting. At the first meeting, Superintendent Hatten stated that he was not going to change anything as it regarded to masks unless there was data or something that would allow him to change his opinion. And we had a special meeting, we gave more masks. He said that he was following, which was just available then, the flow chart. And on the flow chart, we didn't get to ask the question, what part of the flow chart was it that made you feel that you needed to wear a mask? Because there wasn't any, there was no, there was no data to the flow chart. So my point to all of this is, if we are to have confidence in you as a leader of our children, we need for you to be open and honest about your decisions. Open and honest about what you're doing and why you're doing it. And I think that's important, at least for me, too. I respect it, as long as you're being open and honest about it.
Thank you.
My last.
Ross, your time is up, I'm sorry, I appreciate it. Catherine Oden.
Good evening, everybody. I had a whole thing prepared, but I didn't realize you'd be looking for the public participation. So I'm gonna change what I would say, I just want to say thank you all. It was very clear to me that you all took what we had to say last meeting to heart and really sat and chewed on it for quite some time. And I appreciate that, as, uh, you know, board members, that's your duty, and I appreciate you taking the time to do so, so thank you very much. I do want to say one thing, I've never seen board meetings this heavily attended in my time, than my students in Vermillion School District, as they have been last time and this time. And I just want this to, to take this opportunity to remind everybody that we need to take vigil. COVID-19 is not going anywhere. The push for vaccine mandates is not going anywhere, and it's going to take us coming together like we have the last two meetings to, to fight back against this pandemic and such.
Erin Cruz. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, I'm Erin Oden. I appreciate you allowing the hallway to comment again and speak. I feel like last time was embarrassing, it's a good thing. And I have to say, you voted the way that you did, and I just want to know what's going to be planned because we just had an email that the cases have come out, they're doubled. What are you gonna do when there's not plenty of teachers? Are we probably gonna go remote, you know, what's the plan? Because we know families that are out now, entire families that are quarantined that don't have to be. So I just want to know what the plan is gonna be. I don't want my kid to move, mask, no mask, it does drive her mean, my son's vaccine. But we need to keep the schools open and keep them here, because being at home is more of a detriment than being here. Thank you.
Mike Colville.
Can I be heard for a couple more?
Yes.
I'm retooling.
Okay. Catherine, I'm sorry, if that's a clock, thank you.
Hello, thank you, board, for hearing us, all of us. I've been, I was here for the first school day of reading. I wasn't able to attend the second one because both of my children were indirectly exposed, and to be safe, I pulled them from school, got them tested, and once they were clear, sent them back. I am, as I said, a mother of two middle school students. I live in the township, and I have for over ten years. I want to say how deeply disappointed I am in the board. I feel that there was a fear of proposal, a threat to funds by keeping pulling their children out during the week where we know that there's this was happening. The way we see, we're almost to the end of that, we're gonna possibly have to close the school. I didn't hear an answer to that about what happens. And I think it's a, it's a duty of a community member to act responsibly and do what you can, not only for yourself, but the community. And I feel, and there is evidence to support this, I know that others agree with that, and that's fine. But I feel like there is a responsibility that needs to happen, and to those of you that voted against, I hope that you continue to listen to all of us, and I hope that it doesn't get worse, and I hope that we don't shut down. I also did want to tell you guys that I understand the Ohio law says what the gentleman said, but there are actually two Supreme Court cases, Jacobson versus Massachusetts, and the other one is, was, uh, it was the first one that was called that by the beating. Both of those two cases were about vaccines, and it absolutely states that the state can and, uh, mandate vaccines, and I think that also extends to masks as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mike, you're up. You're the last one.
Hey, I didn't see the sign that she, even that's that up, it's my sign.
Yeah, do you want to go, do you want to wait a minute, Mike?
I'll wait, I'll have it signed.
Okay.
I will go quickly here, I just am asking for free potential, if that's okay. You can shut me off too. First note here today to reiterate my support and confidence in this community. And Mr. April said and indicated the last meeting, we cannot let this issue tear our community apart. Everyone in this room has taken the hardest job on the planet, parenting our children. We are together on soccer, baseball fields, basketball courts, within this community. We are members of clubs together, many of us own small businesses, we are involved in this together. Many of us have shared these halls growing up, sitting next to each other in class, and now our children share these halls as well. We may have differences of opinion, but we must be respectful of each and demonstrate our proper conduct in treating others in the public forum. We have elected this school board to serve the interests, and we have elected you to serve all the interests of the parents, childrens, parents, teachers, administrators, and court staff. They have, you have volunteered during time to this end, and to make difficult decisions to support the mission of educating our children. You are good people, I appreciate all of your efforts, and I also understand that these are very difficult decisions. They are business, we, you guys are business owners, teachers, servants in our fire, uh, past, past in the fire department, medical professionals, and also, most importantly, parents. We have collected you specific terms, and during that time to listen to information provided by state, county, and federal governments, hear our voices, and make decisions in the best intentions in the current district. I understand where you have come from today based on where you're at. I, I do want to make sure that we keep our options open in the future. I hope at the minimum, if, one most thing, though, I do believe that our time to mobilize and figure disagree with our board members isn't during our elections, not during the meeting and espousing various opinions of directing at them. We do have those upcoming. Most importantly, our board members, our spouses and children, every member of the extended family cannot be subjected to any intimidation, verbal abuse, online abuse, or otherwise harmful or serve our community. I hope we, at the minimum, we can all agree on that. Now, we also seem to share the importance of keeping our kids in the halls. In order to do that, you certainly have tools available to us. This country has solved immeasurable challenges in engineering, medicine, sent people to space in the bottom of the ocean through science, and I do not understand who have faced this challenge. In some cases, we are abandoning the methodologies that got us to where we are today and disregarding some difficult analysis. I want to be clear, I'm not advocating here, I'm not here advocating any vaccine mandates that are starting to pop up in places in the country. I do believe that facial coverings that have been now used for over 120 years to prevent the spread of disease, they are used in hospitals and other trades to prevent particulates from entering the lungs, many of them are entire shifts. I was one who wore these day on, day out when I was building boats. No, maybe it happened, maybe something happened to me. This is not ideal, but the learning environment must be kept and open as an option to keep kids in the halls. The virus itself dimensionally can pass through a mask, but it travels in droplets and not pass through a mask. I want to echo what Mrs. Roni said. I want to echo Mrs. Ennis about saying, uh, keep our kids, kids healthy, however many, but we're here to stay, class will continually consider these options. I want to recall that we do have an individual that has passed away within this halls in the past month. I, and, you know, somebody who was graduating from this school, and she and her thing, and her family indicated that we need to consider the use of facial coverings. I'm not saying that this is wrong today for what we voted, but we need to keep our options open in the future.
Thank you. I just want to state your names and your good actor ones. Thank you.
My name is Catherine, hi. I saw you last time. And you want to say thank you for, you know, making, living the choice of parent, be parent, letting us do what we, that we best for our children. I appreciate, I appreciate you listening, listening to all of us, live interviews and everything. I'm sorry, you're the only one getting bullied about not wearing, wearing your mask now versus two months ago because the night with all of you throughout the whole summer weren't wearing masks. I don't know why it changed now, but whatever. With new studies coming out, especially the one in Israel, have you guys all heard about that? Because that's, that's the most mass data, like, you know, population, eighty percent of the population vaccinated. All the information's coming out in Israel right now, it's really showing that natural immunity is the best thing for everybody. And I do want you guys to think about this time, and think about that when you guys are making these decisions, that what are you doing? These kids immune to this, so I'm just keeping masks on. On top of, everybody eventually is gonna have COVID. It's not the first disease like this, because the flu, because, you know, it's not the first epidemic either. We all just need to handle this appropriately and be respectful too. Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who hasn't yet had a chance to sign their right to speak? Okay, and you will move to our treasurer's report.
Thank you. Recommend resolution for the board to approve the financial reports for August 31st, 2021 as attached in page. I'll slide it. Okay, taking a look at our general fund revenue by month through the month of August. The district received 9.3 million from the general fund, compared to 8.7 million at this time last year, and 8.75 in fiscal year 20. The biggest difference in revenue from this year compared to the last two fiscal years was that Erie County's homestead rollback taxes were issued in August this year compared to September of last year's basis. The amount of the homestead rollback is $541,000. Overall, the district is on pace to collect its historical average revenue at this time from the general fund. Moving on to food service revenue by month, through the month of August, the district received $1,700 in food service revenue compared to $314 at this time last year, and $2,000 in fiscal year 20. Historically, the district starts to see little revenue in September from the few days that were open in August, and full participation reimbursement in October for the month of September. So these numbers will start to go up. Looking at all funds, through the month of August, the district received 9.7 million in revenue compared to 8.8 last year and 9.5 in fiscal year 20. Again, overall, the district is on pace to collect its average amount of revenue from all funds as historically has. Taking a look at expenditures, looking at our general fund expenditure by month. Through the month of August, the district has spent 4.5 million from its general fund compared to 4.8 million at this time last year, and 4.3 million in fiscal year 20. Again, overall, the district is spending slightly more in these first two months than the historical average. Reason for that, last year we bought a few years of this time, that expenditures are reflected there, which we don't know. Taking a look at food service expenditures by month, through the month of August, we spent $95,000 in food service compared to $89,000 at this time last year, 103,000 in fiscal year 20. Again, our food service spending is way on par with where it is historically. Taking a look at all funding expenditures by month, through the month of August, the district has spent 4.8 billion. compared to 5 million at this time last year and 4.9 million in fiscal year 20. Lastly, we're gonna take a look at cash, general fund cash through the month of August. Uh, the district has 22.7 million in cash compared to 19.9 at this time last year and 20.6 million in fiscal year 20. Again, the number's slightly higher because of the $5,000 received in homestead rollback issued, which we have necessarily had in the month of August. Looking at food service through the month of August, uh, the food service fund has a total of $800, uh, $88,000 in cash compared to $84,000 at this time last year and $277,000 in fiscal year 20. Uh, again, you can see where COVID took place and we had less participation, which gave us less revenue for our student benefit, but we're starting to find that back. And then looking at all cash through the month of August, the district has a total of 26.4 million compared to 23.4 million at this time last year and 24.1 million in fiscal year 20. Uh, taking a look at our investments, through the month of August, the district earned a total of $25,000, $210 on interest compared to $27,921 in fiscal year 20. Uh, small difference, difference of $2,700 and 9.7% less in interest over these first two months than we were in last year at this time. Any questions? This is this. This is Steph. This is Russell. Mr. Aprilville, yes. Mr. Johnson, yes. Motion approved by O C Roanoke. Number two, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the additional student activities, goals, and purposes budget for the school year 2021, 2022 and as attachment B. Yeah, this is just the student council, this is the other, I don't know if you should go over the rest. Mrs. Steph. Mrs. Dennis. Mrs. Russell. Mr. Aprilville, yes. Mr. Johnson, yes. Motion approved five zero. Uh, number three, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the contract amount of $138,067.08 with E S C of Lorraine County and as attachment C. Be partnered with, um, be partnered with Lorraine County E S C for audiological services, pathways to success, literacy consulting, P P I S coaching, um, and also our psychologists. Uh, total amount for this contract is $138,067.08. Mrs. Dennis. Mrs. Steph. Mrs. Russell. Mr. Aprilville, yes. Mr. Johnson, yes. Motion approved five zero. And number four, recommend a resolution to approve the following donations. $2,500 from the salary technology LLC, the girls soccer. Monthly pizza for attendance rewards from Domino's Pizza, I say it the right, and $9,000 from the athletic club to the L S D for coaching software.
I'll move.
Mrs. Russell. Mrs. Steph. Mrs. Dennis. Mr. Aprilville. Mr. Johnson. Motion approved five zero.
I'd like to thank everyone for their donations, but you appreciate all the support that this community gives this district. Okay, we have the consent agenda. The superintendent and treasurer recommend that the board of education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the board of education and adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted on one single motion unless a member of the board, treasurer, or the superintendent requests that any such item removed from the consent agenda is delivered on separately. Number one, minutes of the August 9th, 2021, regular meeting and September 1st, 2021, special meeting, attachment D. Number two, approve the agreement with McCada, which provides a broad spectrum of alcohol to backfill the other mental, emotional, and behavioral prevention services at a cost of $9,270 for 180 hours of services within the Lorraine local school district for the 2021, 2022 school year, attachment.